Okay, thank you. Okay, so for announcements, we had executive session tonight to go over litigation and labor contracts. That about covers it, right?
Yes, that was everything.
Okay. The announcements that I have besides that are, we are going to take a few things off the agenda. One of them is the ordinance concerning the firefighters. We're going to look into that a little further and see if we can go up with something a little better. And we also have a proclamation here. Unfortunately, Lynn Kirkner couldn't make it tonight, so we're going to take that off the agenda. Hopefully she can make it next month and we'll present it to her in person. Other than that, I have no more announcements. Kathy?
I had one announcement that, I'm sorry, I don't remember the date, but I heard that the Warminster Symphony's going to be in Warminster Park. That's going to be like awesome.
August the 27th.
There we go. August 27th, bring your families, show up, it's going to be phenomenal. Our symphony is great. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Speaking of park and rec, I have a few park and rec announcements. Discount amusement park tickets, Regal Cinema movie tickets, park, park passes and dog licenses are now on sale via Parks and Recreation here at 401 Gibson Avenue, Monday through Friday, and at the rec at WCP Tuesdays from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., Thursdays and Fridays from 1:00 to 4:15 p.m. Registration is now open for Parks and Recreation Community Yard Scale, scheduled for Saturday, August 20th, in Warminster Community Park. Please see the website for more information. Park and Recreation's Facebook page is up and running. We encourage Facebook users of Warminster Township Park and Recreation to like and follow the page for parks and rec updates. Outdoor yoga continues through August 27th at Warminster Community Park, Saturday mornings from 9:30 to 10:30 near the rec. Virtual Zumba, gold, and basic belly dance classes, I might have to get in on that one, are available at the township website. Warminster Adult Kickball is accepting full teams and individual participants, and I think that leads really getting legs. I see a lot of it now for their fall season. Join the Warminster Adult Kickball page at Jfox@warminsterpa.org. The annual park and rec golf outing is back on, October 10th, at Five Ponds Golf Course. Email Jess, Jfox@warminsterpa.org for sponsor information. I'm sure Mr. Kenner and I will be teaming up for that one. Upcoming events, the 13th of August is the SEC-A Rally at WCP Runway. The 13th is Ivyland Peach Festival 5K Run at Monroe. The 20th of August is a park and rec community yard sale. 21st Bike USA, Warminster Community Park, and this is the biggie, August 20th to 7th, at the O'Neill Pavilion, which is the new pavilion up by Bristol Road, which will be a free concert at 7:00 p.m. by the Warminster Symphony. Bring out your blankets and chairs and bring the kids, bring the whole family and come out. It should be a really, really nice night. Hopefully we'll get nice weather and I think, do we have a rain date for that? I didn't ask Jess.
I think it's set to 28th.
The 28th, it will be the rain date for that. September, the Barcar Show on the runway is the 17th, and the 18th is the SEC-A Rally on the runway. Ready for information, please go to warminster township.org/parkandrec. I only have two more things, Mr. Chairman. I want to congratulate and thank Pete Carter for his upcoming retirement. Pete Carter is one of our public works guys who's been here for 30 years, and I think if you've driven up and down street road, you've seen Pete, because he's been working on our signals for 30 years along street road and all over the township. He services all of our signals and I wish him a real happy retirement and a long, healthy one. And the last one I have is one I'd like to offer condolences, I'm sure, on behalf of the board and township administration to the Thurn family. This just brought to my attention today that Tom Thurn passed away.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and Tom was a long-term, longtime Warminster resident, longtime Warminster employee for Ellen I. He served on planning and zoning that I know of.
Volunteer, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Tom donated a lot of time to this township and he's had a tough couple of years. He lost his wife and his son the last couple of years, and so, you know, we wish his family all the best and Godspeed, Tom. He was a good guy. So, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Jamie?
I just wanted to say that one event that he didn't list was Ben Wilson Center is having a designer handbag party on September 16th. And call the Ben Wilson Center, Senior Center, and get your tickets, they're $25, it's a lot of fun.
Tickets are 35, 25 if you have six or more people.
Oh, okay, sorry.
What was that, 25?
35.
25 or 30?
But if you bring your whole family and it comes to six, it's only 25 a ticket.
There you go, yeah.
So, it's 35.
35.
Party of six, 25 a ticket.
Right.
Okay, excellent. All right, Janice?
Hey, how are you?
All right.
Hey, everybody, how you doing? It's getting very hot outside. I hope everybody's enjoying this hot, toasty weather, but I would ask you to kind of take a walk and visit your senior neighbors and make sure that they're doing okay. A lot of times, our senior friends stay in the house, keep their doors shut, and they don't regulate the heat as well, so, you know, take a walk or visit your senior neighbors and kind of check in on them, so be good neighbors. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Janice. So, tonight, we're happy to say we have another officer being sworn in, Christian Baskerville. And Chief, come on up.
Good evening. I'm Jim Donnelly, I'm the Chief of Police for Warminster Township. Tonight, I present Christian Baskerville. Christian was born and raised in the Bronx, New York. He is a graduate of John Jay College in New York, where he ran cross-country and he coached cross-country for them. He's a graduate of the Philadelphia Police Academy, where he served with the Philadelphia Police Department for six years. His last assignments were the 12th District and the 3rd District, and I would present him to be sworn in as our next police officer. Apologies, because I just swallowed my gum, so I'm choking. Nah, I got it, I'm ready to go, so, I'll ask the judge to come up and...
All right.
He'll be company by his girlfriend Danielle.
Okay. Thanks, Chief. Lieutenant DeLuca was ready to jump right in there. We have a new microphone here.
You're seeing it, it's way away from me.
Good. Take this. Make sure that's working. It's on.
Sounds like it is.
Yep.
Can anybody hear me? Okay, I guess it's working. So, you probably saw, I have to ask, you're not painful with belly dance classes?
No, I was thinking about it.
You're just going to watch, right?
Yeah, right.
Watch what I say, because there's a lot of cops.
Good sport, Officer Baskerville.
Good evening, I'm Judge Dan Fennello, Judge for Warminster Township. And I'm Ben Morrow, and again, this is one of the fun things I get to do, swearing. A new officer, he's from Philadelphia, you know, he's got some experience, and I'm sure he'll do a great job here, okay? I think you'll find it's a little different here, Officer Baskerville, you know, there's probably more people in a 20-block area in Philadelphia than are in town. And that's in this town, but that's not too bad, because, you know, you get to do a lot more outreach and community policing and all that stuff, okay, which is important, okay? And you'll get to know all the players in town, and if you don't, the guys in the back that showed up, so you get sworn in, it'll help you. So, you ready to take the oath of office?
Yes, sir.
Okay, put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand, and we'll pay it after me. I, Christian Baskerville...
I, Christian Baskerville...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth...
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will faithfully discharge...
And I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of patrol officer...
The duties of patrol officer.
In Warminster Township Bucks County...
In Warminster Township Bucks County.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
I also solemnly swear...
I also solemnly swear...
That I will uphold, obey, and defend and enforce...
That I will uphold, obey, and enforce...
The laws of Pennsylvania...
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And without consideration...
Without consideration.
To a person's race, color, sex...
To a person's race, color, sex...
Religious creed, sexual orientation, age...
Religious creed, sexual orientation, age...
National origin, ancestry...
National origin, ancestry.
Handicap or disability...
Handicap or disability.
So, help me God.
So, help me God.
Congratulations, officer.
You want to shake your hand?
She'll get over that. Thank you so much.
Welcome to Warminster.
Thank you.
Again.
Thank you. Good luck. Thank you.
Take care. Thank you.
Again, I want to thank the Chief and the Police Department and all everybody here for the honor to swear Officer Baskerville. And I'll see him in court soon, and you guys can prep him on that too in the back. All right, have a nice night, good evening.
So, we're going to take a moment for maybe some photos for the family. So, let's take a quick five-minute recess. Thank you, Judge Fennello, and...
Can I go first?
Sure, Bobby. And we...
We have one more presentation.
Officer Baskerville will do a great job. So, where are we now?
Audit.
That's right, the audit. Okay, we have Julie Davis here from Dunlop. Julie, you're up.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm wonderful.
Good. All right, good to be back. Hopefully you all have a copy of the report in front of you. It's pretty long, so I'm going to go through every page, just kidding.
Don't tell Bobby that.
I think I made that joke every year.
Yeah, yeah.
She just rolled her eyes, no.
We were looking for the Cliff Notes.
All right, Cliff Notes it is. Okay, if you turn to page one of the report, the first three pages of the report are the audit opinion. This is why we do this, obviously, and just to point it out to you, it is in a new format. The paragraphs are all rearranged. We added more words, because goutons like to do that. But the most important thing is that the opinion is front and center, the first thing you read when you open it versus it was the last thing you read before, and it is an unmodified opinion, which means it is a clean report. All right.
Very happy.
So, pages four through 14 are the management discussion and analysis. That is actually your own document, so I am not going to cover it, because it's your document.
Right, okay.
Pages 15, 16, and 17, these are the full accrual financial statements. So, just a real quick refresher on what that means. These report your activities in two columns, government activities and business-type activities. Business-type activities is your golf course, your government activities is everything else. It's on a full accrual basis, so that means we see the debt balance, the capital asset balance, the liability for the pension, liability for the OPEB, which is different from the other set of statements. It's a long-term view, so you have a good long-term overview of where you stand with your assets and liabilities. So, at the end of the year 2021, you had total net position in your governmental funds of 32 million, and you had a 4.3 million net asset position in your golf course. I'm not going to go through that in detail. I do want to point, I will point out though, good news, that net pension liability, that's about two-thirds of the way down the page, is sitting there at 3.8 million. I just want to point out that went down by 5 million last year because of the performance of your investments. So, it was a good year investment-wise, and that really helped a lot. Hopefully this year, we'll get back up there. Right now, we're down, but, you know, hopefully we'll get backed up there by the end of the year, and you'll see a similar number. The other post-employment benefits is your OPEB fund, and we'll talk about that when we get back later into the notes. Okay, so, moving to page 18, these start your modified accrual statements. These are presented on a fund basis. I think this is the presentation you're used to seeing. We present, we do a calculation, and we present your major funds on the face of the statement, and then collapse everything else into non-major funds. So, your major funds for 2021 were general fund, sanitation fund, and capital reserve fund. The only thing I'm going to note on page 18 is that under deferred grant receipts, you do have the ARPA funds that came in, hadn't been spent until 21, so they are there. I don't know where you are with that in '22, but as of the end of '21, those were available for use. I'm going to go to page 21, which is the statement of revenues and expenditures. Looking at the general fund, the total revenues for 2021 were 16.4 million versus 15.4. The major increase, major line item that increased there was taxes, your EIT and your transfer taxes, each went up a half a million dollars, so that looks great. The total expenditures for the year were 5.1 million versus, I'm sorry, 15.1 million versus 15.2 million the prior year, so they actually went down. So, good stuff. Looking at the other financing sources section, you had a positive of $2 million there. That section also reflects the sale of the storm service system. So, for the year, your change in net fund balances in the general fund was positive 3.4 million. Last year, it was about break even, so that was obviously a much better result. The capital reserve fund, I don't usually go over, but I just wanted to point out in that other financing sources, they did have the debt issuance and the debt retirement. So, that actually had a nice positive result for the year as well. Any questions on any of that, that I just went through really fast?
Well, it sounds like we've, we're on the right track, let's put it that way.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The golf course, I'm just going to jump right to page 25. The golf course had a great year. Right in the middle of the page there, your operating gain was 1.3 million, so, great year there. And the last thing I wanted to point out about the golf course is that the amount due to the general fund decreased by half?
It went from 155 to 150,000.
Yeah, there you go.
That's it.
It's pretty much a monthly, that's the only thing left.
Does Bill McCauley still tune into our meetings? I don't know. Hopefully he's watching.
Yes.
This is pet peeve.
That hadn't gone down in years.
Years.
That's fantastic.
I know Bill, when the golf course, you used to call Bill, she'd say, "You owe us $2 million."
Yes, I remember that. You tell him, "You owe us $2 million."
So, that's another positive.
Yes.
There's a lot of positives here.
Good, good, because I know where the negative's coming. I know when that's coming.
All right, the pension and the pension, trust, and custodial funds are the next set of statements. These are obviously your pension funds, the custodial fund is your escrow funds. These are fiduciary funds, they're not your money, but you're responsible for making sure they're properly spent. The pension funds, as previously stated, had a great year. If you look on page 28, you can see the net investment income in the pension funds was 6.5 million. So, that helped bring that pension liability down substantially. Any questions on those statements? All right, the notes to the financial statements are very long, I promise not to go through them all. They start on page 29, the first 10 pages, from 29 to 39, are all summary of significant accounting policies. It just basically explains all that stuff that I just told you, so if you want to read through it.
Thank you, thank you for summarizing.
You're welcome. On page 39, we start the cash and investment note. This is also a pretty long note. This note goes through page 44. Again, I'm not going to go through it in detail, but if you wanted to look at it later, it breaks out your cash by the different types of cash accounts you have, your investment accounts, the pension investments are included in this note, broken out by the type of investment vehicle. It goes through the various types of risks that investments are subject to and where you stand with them. So, I'm going to jump to page 14. And this page gives you a very detailed breakout of your capital assets in both your governmental funds and your golf fund. So, again, I'm not going to go through it in detail, except to note that in the middle of the page there, your infrastructure line, we have that disposal of the sewer system. All right. Next page, 45, starts the long-term liabilities note. Again, the notes serve to give you more detail about things that you saw in the statements before. If you wanted to get more detail on the notes outstanding, you have a table here that shows you the activity for the year, and following a few pages, lay out the terms of each of the notes, interest rates, future maturities, things like that. So, you've simplified it by issuing the new debt and hang on, a few other things, so there's really only one note left. I want to go to page 49. So, this starts the pension benefit plan note. Again, this page is extremely long, and I won't go through it in detail. There's just a few things that are kind of interesting in it. If you go to page 53, we have a little table there that just gives you a what-if kind of scenario, what if your interest rate, assumed interest rate was a percent higher or a percent lower, so you can see how any changes that you make to your assumptions would impact it. Page 54, this gives you the detail of the, you know, beginning to ending net liability, and you can see there that the middle column show you the investment values and how they went up. All right. Page 58. Page 58, now we're into the OPEB note, the other post-employment benefit note.
I'm sorry, what does that stand for again? We haven't heard that.
So, you talk about this a lot?
Mm, yes.
Yeah, okay.
I had nauseum.
On page 59, same kind of table that we just had in the pension note, where you can kind of see if your assumed discount rate was higher or lower, where you would be with the liability. So, the very last note in the note section, notes, that you have established an OPEB trust, and you're going to fund that in September, November? So, this will serve to reduce this liability. So, hopefully, we will see with a good market, hopefully, the rest of the year, establishing this trust, we will see this liability go down. And any, you know, I assume you'll, well, I don't assume, but if you budget an amount that goes into it every year, it'll slowly start whittle that liability down.
Our plan as of right now, I think we discussed this last time with Steve, I think. That wasn't an executive session, was it? That was at the Pension Advisory Board. Right, Pension Advisory Board, right, where we plan to, we don't plan to take any withdrawals from this, let it accrue, and continue, with every chance we get, we're going to put more money into it. And aggressive investments to try to get the max out of it. Yeah, we're going to try to increase it, increase it without drawing from it for at least a few years. And that should bring the liability down. And that should bring the liability down more, yes.
Yep.
Yeah, this is a big problem, and we've never, it's never been addressed, and we finally addressed it, and I'm thrilled that this board actually took action and addressed this finally.
Yep, that's great, that's great. Okay, so, moving to page 63, these are required supplementary disclosures. They all pertain to the pension fund and the OPEB fund, and what this does is you can see the trend, if you wanted to look across the years, you can see the trend of the liability and where it's started, where it's ended up, that kind of thing, so. So, I am going to then go, we're almost done, I promise, I am going to go to page 75. 75 is the budget-to-actual statement for the general fund, and total revenues were over budget by 2.3 million, total expenditures were under budget by 1 million, so you had a positive variance in the budget of 2.3 million per year. So, there's a lot of reasons, I mean, the tax increase in, you know, in the EIT and the transfer taxes, obviously, was a big thing. Some salaries were down, benefits, but, yeah, so that looks great. The rest of the statement is just, if you wanted to see what was in that non-major fund column, the details in the back, there's detail of the pension fund, organized by police, non-uniform, and defined contribution, if you wanted to look at that. So, any questions?
No, thank you.
I'd comment, I really like, I really like the new format.
Format.
Thank you, thanks, Judy.
You're welcome.
Sorry, Janice.
It's fine, very user-friendly.
Good.
Honestly, I'm thrilled that the audit reflects all the changes that we've made over the past, since 2020, with controlling our spending and the ATM got turned off, so to speak, and we see that in the audit. Things look much healthier than when I first walked in here, that's for sure.
Yep.
And I'm thrilled, thrilled that this, excellent job. Thank you. Thank you, Julie.
There's two other just things I want to say really quick. There's two letters that go along with this. One letter is where we would note if we had any findings or deficiencies in the controls or other areas of the township, and we had no findings, so that's fabulous. And then the other letter just lays out our responsibility to design an audit, your responsibility to take responsibility for it, and we would note any difficulties, issues, problems that we had in the audit, we had none. And the last thing that gets disclosed in that letter is any journal entries we had to make. There was only one, it was a kind of a fluky thing that had to do with the debt, which is, you know, it's unusual to have so few journal entries in an audit. Well, not here, but in general, in my other audits, it is, so.
So, are you saying that our financial director's doing an excellent job?
That is what I'm saying, yes.
Yay!
So, I just wanted to...
Thank you, John. That's why we brought him on board, because we knew he would do an excellent job.
So, we call this, we call this a true audit...
Yes.
...which is where we come in and actually audit the numbers, because the numbers are complete and final, where we have a lot of audits where they're not, where we're figuring out the numbers.
Right.
Great job.
Great job, John. Julie, thank you very much, great job as well. Of course, Steve, Don, and, you know, this is awesome. We don't need a motion to accept this, right? No, okay, great. Thank you, Julie. Good to see you.
See you next year.
We love good news.
Hopefully, we have the same news next year. Thank you. Okay, that's, that was encouraging. We still have a long way to go. I know our general fund looks pretty good right now, but it still needs a lot of work. So we're still not completely out of the woods, and this board, I know, will continue to do everything along with our manager, assistant manager, and our financial director to continue on the road to recovery here. Great, thanks very much.
Ditto.
Okay, I think someone wants to make public comment. Come on up, Bobby. And you have good news as well, right?
Yes, we're doing very well in the tax department.
Great.
As of the end of July, we were ninety-eight percent collected, ninety-eight percent.
Wonderful, thank you to all the residents.
And since then, yeah, and since then, eleven people have come in and paid.
Wow.
So we're really, really doing, you know, well, as far as, as that goes.
Fantastic.
Don't expect a lot of money from me from now till the end of the year. I wanted, and another good news is, the upset sale is coming in September. Now, what the upset sale is, is it's sale of houses for people that haven't paid their taxes. And for the first time in my whole time as tax collector, we only have fourteen parcels. Normally, we have thirty, thirty-five. We have fourteen that are going up for upset sale. And I checked on the website today, and all fourteen of them, they haven't paid. So once they get this letter that they're going to lose their house, I'm sure some of that will come in too.
Okay.
Wow.
Excellent.
Fourteen, that's phenomenal.
That is, that is.
At ten-thousand-four-hundred, yeah.
Would you say the percentage that you collected, is that on the higher amount?
Oh, my gosh, yes, it's highest than it's ever been.
Wow, that's amazing.
Normally, when it gets close to the end of the year.
Right.
I'm at ninety-eight percent.
Right.
That's awesome.
So I still have September, October, November, December to collect. And I haven't sent out final notices yet. So we, I always have people to pay December thirty-first, always. So, you know, we'll get more in.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
Yeah.
Thanks to all the residents.
Yes, they really are.
For responding, because that helps us, every, everything we get, as early as we get, it helps us to operate the township.
And I can tell the difference between the township and the school. School is due in two weeks. I am so far behind.
Wow.
In the school collections, as I am with the townships. So you can tell the economy is right now affecting, you know, between the gas prices and the food prices, they just don't have it to pay everything.
Right.
So the school's not going to get it quite as fast as you guys got it.
Well, we appreciate your work.
Speaking of school taxes, they are due at discount August thirty-first. Now, I will be open on Saturday, August twenty-seventh, from nine to twelve. And then on Tuesday and Wednesday, August thirtieth and thirty-first, I'm open from nine in the morning to six at night. Now, they have to be in my office by the thirty-first. So I just wanted to remind people of the dates that they're due.
Okay.
Okay?
Great, thanks, Bobby.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks for the, thanks for the great work, too.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Secret.
Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. We'll consider approval of the Board of Supervisors' minutes dated July fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Consider approval of memorandum of understanding between the Centennial School District and the Police Department. Consider approval of my rec agreements. Consider authorization for township administration to advertise an RFP for advisory services, actuarial services, and custodial services for the Township Pension Fund. Consider crisis home Shepherd's Crossing Phase Three A Joy Court cottages, release number one from the escrow account in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and fifty-two cents. And finally, consider the release of the one-sixty-seven Kirk Road Land Development eighteen-month maintenance security in the amount of three-thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Does anybody want to, any explanations on the, I mean, we all understand this, perhaps, I think we talked about the my rec stuff last time here with, with Jess, right?
Yeah, it's a, it's a calendar and scheduling program.
Right, right, which I think will be fantastic for the park system.
I agree.
And then the advisory services, and that's just this for the pension fund. So any comments or questions from the public? Okay, we'll call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries five-o. All right, finance report. Mr. McKee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion, and I'll ask for a second, that we approve the bill list dated July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, in the amount of one-million, five-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and ninety-seven cents. And the supplemental bill list dated July twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two, in the amount of one-million, seven-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty dollars and eighty-six cents.
Motion. Second.
I didn't get the total, total's on my other sheet, so.
Still second.
Okay. The total is three-million, three-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirteen dollars and eighty-three cents, and I believe this over is seconded the motion, and we approve.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board, from the public? Okay, being done, we'll call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries five-o. Thank you, Mark. And come on up, John, we won't grill you too much, because you just had, got a gold star.
Before we get started, I do have to thank my staff, Sean and Cindy, for everything they do. They run the day-to-day and keep everything running, so that there are no findings, so. Real quick, the general fund continues to look good. Revenues are up six-hundred-and-three-thousand from last year, six percent. In your binders, where the yellow tab is, you can follow the numbers along. Compared to budget, we're at sixty-eight percent. We were at sixty-eight percent last year. So revenues are tracking the same as usual, still looking good. Expenses, they're only up ninety-four-thousand dollars compared to last year, so it's only a two percent increase. We're at thirty-nine percent of budget, we're at June thirtieth. Normally, we'd be at fifty percent, so we are tracking way under, on a constant year budget. Last year, we were at thirty-five percent, so we are a little bit closer where we should be at the fifty, but still under, which is a good thing. Some of the revenues that are up, still the transfer taxes up one-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand, EITs three-hundred-and-ten. Real estate, I think that's a timing, because we didn't raise taxes this year, they're up seventy-four thousand. The two things that are actually down on the revenue side are billing permits and electric permits. In total, they're down two-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand. I think that's what we expected, we had a lot of development in the past, it's kind of tearing off a little bit, they're, as projects finish up, the permits are done with. On the expense side, some of the big increases are IT equipment was up nineteen, the labor attorney, that's up seventeen thousand, we did have some arbitration this year. One of the big things that is down is inspection costs. As the permits and everything decrease, the inspection costs decrease also, since we outsource that. So that's trending in the same motion. Later on in the agenda, there's the approval of the MMOs, I just wanted to touch on that real quick while I'm up here. The police MMO only increased eighty-six-hundred dollars this year, but it's probably the smallest increase I've ever seen in my life. At the same time, the non-uniform decreased eighty-four thousand. So the net effect on the general fund is, we're talking about two-hundred dollars of an increase for the twenty-twenty-three budget. That's great news to get things started on the budget season.
And that's market value, correct?
Yes, it is.
Excellent.
On your next page, I just wanted to touch on the golf fund. Julie mentioned about how good of a year they had that last year. Since we're halfway through this year, I just wanted to take a look at it. Revenues are actually up six-point-nine percent, or one-hundred-and-seven-thousand, but expenses are up another one-hundred-and-two-thousand dollars. So we are looking, like, we're almost breakeven, we're at forty-three-hundred dollars compared to last year, but if we could keep that trend, as Julie said, we had a one-point-three-million-dollar profit last year. So that's something to look forward to, if we could keep that, then we could take those funds, reinvest them in the golf course, and then actually distribute that to other funds, cover some of the overhead costs that the administration puts in to the golf course. This is one of the first years that we're doing that.
Well, the golf course is, how long did it take? When did, when did we purchase that?
Eighty-eight, eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight?
Yeah.
So it took almost, well, it took fifteen years, a little more than fifteen years, right, or fourteen years, to finally have the golf course payoff?
Some of the big things that are leading to this year are the outings and banquets. Golf usually just covers the overhead costs. The outings and banquets, the revenue's up eighty-three-thousand dollars, which also leads to the increase in expense, but that's only forty-eight. So that's where the real moneymaker is, to keep trying to have those kind of events.
Yes.
And I think that's where Mike and the team over there does a great job of marketing outings and stuff like that.
They do a fantastic job. By the way, I miscalculated, it's actually thirty-four years.
I just wanted to mention that.
That's all right.
The golf.
It's not a mistake unless you don't correct it, right, Steve?
I just wanted to mention real quick, I've had some friends that have had events there at the golf course, and they say it's, the food is incredible, the service, everything. So they are doing a great job. Kudos to you guys, keep doing it.
Any questions?
No, it sounds like we're still.
Heading in the right direction.
Everything that we said we were going to do, control spending and.
And we're moving along with the twenty-three budget.
Yep.
So hopefully, sooner than later, we'll get something out to you guys and take a look at it.
That'd be awesome.
Thanks, John.
Rather than scrambling, it would be nice to see that sooner than better.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Great work. Okay. Moving along. There it is. No unfinished business, we'll move along to new business, and we'll go right to the approval of the OPEB investment policy statement asset allocation. We have a special guest tonight, backed by popular demand, Steve Wiesner. Please come forward.
Come on down.
So I said, we gave Steve the key to the city.
That's right.
He keeps unlocking the door. Do you, so we've got it listed, Steve, as the approval of the OPEB investment policy statement asset allocation, the consideration of approval of the OPEB trust investment advisory agreement. Do you want to flip-flop those, or is that okay with, are you all in that order?
I'm okay, I'm okay.
Okay.
I think it'll work out fine.
So I'll try to summarize first, but you can bail me out after I fall out of my chair.
Please.
The pension advisory committee met a couple of weeks ago, and the previous action taken by the Board of Supervisors put the OPEB trust on the, on the agenda for the advisory, the pension advisory committee and the, and PFM to, to invest those funds as they do the pension. So the PFM's recommendation, and Don is here to correct me if I am wrong, is that the, and this was approved by the committee to recommend to the Board of Supervisors to be, have an aggressive investment outlook with a seventy-thirty split for?
Seventy percent equities, thirty percent fixed.
So that's stocks, and then thirty percent would be?
The fix would be bonds, primary bonds, municipal, corporate bonds, municipal bonds.
Right. So I think, and the, the policy statement asset allocation document sets that forth, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you, Don. Okay. So I would say, ask the board to approve the recommendations by the advisory committee and PFM for the asset, the policy statement asset allocation as, as set forth in the appropriate documentation for the seventy-thirty split.
I couldn't have said it better.
Okay. I think you could have. He's just nodding, so he just wants to go. We'll, we'll clean this up in post-production.
We're going to go back to the lake.
So we'll, we'll need a motion.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second, okay. So basically, Don, correct me if I'm wrong, because I know the federal government has, yeah, come on up to the podium.
So folks can hear.
Yeah, tell the folks that Don Moyer are down. Yeah.
I am Donald Grant, Senior Management Consultant with PFM Asset Management, your investment advisor on your police pension and your non-uniform pension plan, and soon to be your advisor if everything goes the way it's planned for your other post-employment benefit trust.
Okay. So the seventy-thirty split is very similar to an aggressive investment, say, if you're looking to retire in like thirty, forty years.
Yes, and that's kind of the way, and that's kind of the way we looked at it, and the way I structured the presentation to the Pension Investment Advisory Committee was to go over different allocations. The key being, when we think about risk and return, we think about risk, can you take the risk, and do you have the appetite for the risk? Since you're not intending to spend any of the capital within the OPEB trust for at least twenty years, then you are willing to take that risk. So the time horizon's long, there is no liquidity need or cash flow need from the trust. My only question to the Pension Advisory Committee was whether or not you're willing to take that risk. I can't make that decision, the committee can. With that being said, the committee did agree to a seventy-thirty allocation, and it's appropriate for, again, to, like you said before, somebody who's looking to retire in the next thirty, forty years.
Right. I'm pretty sure the, the inflation numbers are starting to trend downward now, and I know the stock market's usually a month or two ahead of reality, we'll put it that way. So I think it's, I mean, I don't have any issues with a seventy-thirty split at all.
Because our, our plan all along, Mr. Hayes and I, with the Pension Advisory Board, was that we put this money in and we let it grow, and it will offset what our obligation is every year, it should bring the obligation down.
Exactly.
On our annual budget at the general fund.
And that's the key.
As that grows.
Yes.
All right, and this is the fastest way to grow it?
Yep. I agree.
The only key caveat I will say is it will be a little bit more sensitive in regards to market shifts because of the risks involved.
Right.
But over the longer period of time, that will smooth out.
Right.
Yes. There's risk in everything, it's just a matter of managing it.
Absolutely.
That's, what's that, Business 101? Thank you.
You're welcome.
We're not, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, we're not anticipating needing to use any of the revenue from this trust anytime soon to pay the medical insurance premiums, which is what all this is for, for the retirees, the future retirees, for, for a number of years. We're going to continue to do that just through the general fund while this grows and allows us to also, at the same time, get credit for the annual OPEB liability assessment, although I'm mixing my words. So right now, remember, we just, we just went over twenty million in July, so next July, maybe we'll see it come down a little bit, because you all have had the foresight to bracket this money out and assign it as a something that cannot be revoked, cannot be taken, it's going to be used to help pay those bills down the road. So hopefully, that liability will come down a little bit, and we'll see that paid off year over year over year. But for the balance sheet of twenty-twenty-three, twenty-one, we're not going to need to use any of this money, so we're going to let it cook.
And by us adopting this investment policy protects this from a change in the board, a change in administration. This is solid going forward, that this is the way this is going to be. And it's, it's the right thing to do. Yeah, I agree.
And we have, and you don't have to take it from me, because we're going to get, at some point, hopefully at the next meeting, Lauren Hess from Conrad Spiegel.
Siegel?
Siegel. Siegel. We would ask her to come here tonight, she had a conflict, so hopefully, we're going to get her here in September, or a colleague of ours, to actually be the person who does the, the evaluation and, and every year, and can say those things to reassure the board that the action we're taking is proper, and it will have a year-over-year positive effect on that liability. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Don.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
One more.
Yeah, Steve, you're not, I don't think you're dismissed yet.
So this one now, we can start, we can actually take the money and move it into the trust.
You need to take the vote.
We need to take the vote on the first, right?
Right.
Clean it up in the post.
So we took, we have a motion to accept the, the policy asset allocation.
Section.
Okay. Any other, any questions from the, well, there was a motion. Seconded by Janice. Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, let's call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The chair votes aye, motion carries five-o, thank you. All right, next one is the approval of the OPEB trust investment advisory agreement, correct? Yes, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, this would be for us to execute the agreement with PFM to actively, to invest the money instead of just having it on our books as cash. This will authorize them to do that. Okay, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? We've, we've, you know, I, I don't just sit there and listen, Don, I ask a lot of questions. I ask a lot of questions.
I do appreciate that. We do appreciate that.
Well, that, that actually, I, I do that for, primarily, um, for the people that sit there, who's actually their pensions.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, sometimes people are afraid to ask questions, um, and I do that so they understand what we're doing. Um, so I think that's a fair game, and I'll continue to do that.
Please do. I mean, we, we welcome the communication, and that just helps me and Bikram understand and know where everybody is at, because at the end of the day, we want to make sure you have the information that you need to make the decisions you need to make.
Right.
So, and through that discussion, we can ensure that.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and you guys do a great job, so, uh. Any other questions or comments? I have one more comment, if you could.
Sure.
Oh, sorry to drag. And if we need to actually show a third-party observer, arbitrator, how seriously the Board of Supervisors takes the responsibility for the twenty million dollar liability, this is a very good example, and that we would ask an arbitrator, if we need to, to show that we need to take inroads on this OPEB. Look, we're trying to do things right now with the, with the funds we have to help reduce this liability. If we ask for a third-party arbitrator to, uh, help us out and to approve a change we want to make in the overall, uh, requirements for the post-retirement health insurance, perhaps this will also help to demonstrate how seriously everyone on our side of the equation is taking it. Thank you.
Okay.
Good point.
Any other questions or comments from the public? Okay, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Don. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Wees.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
All right, so now we, uh, speaking of the pensions, the MMO, as, uh, John alluded to, uh, we'll have a considerable motion to approve the twenty twenty-three minimum municipal obligation, which is MMO, for the township pension plans as follows. Police pension plan, one million eight hundred ninety-three dollars. One million eight hundred ninety-three thousand dollars, three hundred and thirty-seven. Uh, the non-uniform pension plan is four hundred thirty-five thousand six hundred fifty-one dollars. Said that one right. The non-uniform defined contribution plan is thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. And the peace, police pension plan, again, is one million eight hundred ninety-three thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. I'm tongue-tied tonight. All right, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Second? All right, so, again, John, could you step up, please? It won't, it won't take but a second. What were the increases?
So the increase to the police was eight thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars, and the non-uniform was a decrease of eight thousand four hundred and sixty-four thousand.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. That's, I, I think that's incredible, myself.
That's the most controlled I've seen in ten years.
Most controlled, yes.
Most controlled in all the years.
I mean, it's still, we still got a lot of work to do.
Well, yeah, that's right, and that's what I said. There's a lot of work to do, but this is controlled now. I mean, it's getting better. It's, it was out of control for years.
Oh, yeah.
And, um, and we, now we're fine to get a, get a grip on it, so, uh. Any questions or comments from the Board? Any questions from the public? All right, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Some good news again tonight. Okay. Consider approval of the Ben Wilson Senior Center bid, and this is for the, uh, heating and, uh, air conditioning replacement. Um, and that will go to the low bidder of LGB Mechanical for five hundred and four thousand dollars, subject to the, to the responsible contractor ordinance. And then, um, the authorize, the, um, for the electrical construction for the HVAC, HVAC replacement, uh, will go to the low bidder Armor &amp; Sons for sixty-eight thousand dollars, again, subject to the responsible contractor ordinance. And finally, the, uh, Notice of Intent to Award Ben Wilson Center Project for the emergency backup generator installation to the low bidder Armor &amp; Sons, again, for a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, subject to the responsible contractor ordinance. Is there a motion?
Uh, so moved.
Second?
I've been all three of these at once, right?
Second?
Yes.
Yeah, we can move to all three.
I just have a question. Do we have a timeline on this?
Um, I would think.
Go ahead. One's awarded, of course.
Well, right, we would issue the Notice of Intent to Award based on the action taken tonight, and we would have Phillips and Donovan set up a pre-construction meeting. We can collect the, whatever, uh, the bonding documents and insurance documents that, uh, are being required, and then we can set, uh, the Notice of Intent, uh, excuse me, the, uh, the Notice to Proceed.
We're looking at, this should be underway in a month or so.
I would say at least.
Even sooner, yeah. If not sooner.
I'd like to see it get done before winter.
I know, I know what you meant by it.
I'd like to see it done before winter. That'd be great.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. I think we could probably get this, uh, issue the appropriate notices before the next board meeting.
Oh, good.
And refresh my memory, are we funding this through ARPA? Correct, for the office?
Yes, I believe so. I believe that's ARPA. So that'll, that'll be some, uh, come off the books.
Right.
For next year. But money well spent, again.
That's what it's there for.
That's right.
That's right.
And this is, so this is actually, if you recall, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, may I? Certainly. This is actually two projects. It just happens to be going on at the same location. The generator and fixing the, and replacing the HVAC.
Right.
And Armor, those work for us already. They're a very good contractor, and as, uh, LGB Mechanical are, are another, um, very qualified responsible contractor, so I'm sure, uh, Scott has done his vetting and, uh, um, any questions or any more questions or comments?
I can tell you that Ben Wilson Center is thrilled that this is going to be.
Yes.
They really are thrilled.
I bet. Long as we're good.
We're good? Yep. Janice, any questions?
Yeah.
You're good? Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Excellent. Okay, moving along. Mr. Scott. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, I just have a couple of things to update the Board on. Uh, the first one is the Log College Tennis Courts. Uh, they are in a sad state. Uh, and we have been, uh, we are suggesting, uh, to Park and Rec that the, uh, the Log College Tennis Court be replaced with volleyball courts. There's already volleyball court there on the grass and dirt, and that would replace the tennis court with a new grass and dirt volleyball court. Jess Fox, our director, is looking into how, how to do that. It was actually her idea. Yes. Uh, but based on her analysis of the tennis court, I think there's some photos.
I read the report and the photos were, were very descriptive. I've gone by it lots of times. It's a mess. It is a mess.
Uh, and we do have alternate tennis location. At Monroe.
At Monroe.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa. So look, we're gonna be looking forward to doing that in the next, uh, in the next, uh, couple of months, if not next year. Uh, also, no action needs to be taken by the Board, thank you. And it's RACP funding update, the never-ending RACP funding.
Oh, boy.
We are crawling inevitably, uh, in a glacier-like pace, but we are actually making progress, uh, through the hard work from Assistant Township Manager Lisa Howdyshell, who has been wrangling the, the documents and the issues and dealing with the, the state's consultant, StanTech. Uh, we have, we have whittled this down to a few items, uh, that, uh, for steel certifications and for some, some payroll issues, uh, uh, that we have to go back and check on a few of the contractors that worked there, including Armor, uh, whether or not they had, uh, filed the right documents, uh, for the, for the payroll numbers for the, uh, prevailing wage. There is a very small, but still annoying punchless left for the physical work that can be best summed up into better seeding and a little bit better grading for a few spots. So we're going to try to eliminate, once we get by the very hot weather of August, so that, uh, uh, seed, uh, seed mixes can be planted and improved, and, uh, we can start, uh, we can start fixing some, uh, a, a grading issue along the trail. Uh, there is a fix for, uh, flooding at the O'Neill Pavilion. Work order change that we think is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty thousand-plus dollars. Uh, if we can do it ourselves with Public Works and Park and Rec and some, some volunteers from the Assistant Manager's Office.
I think, busy woman.
But if not, because, uh, if not, we will, we will engage with MECO to do it. Uh, if they're not chomping at the bit to do it, because they don't, they have the same problems everybody else does. Covid, people are out, people on vacation. But we're talking about something that needs to be done, because we can't have a pavilion getting flooded all the time like this. And, uh, until that's, until that's taken care of, uh, it would be disingenuous of us, especially me as manager, to say that we're officially done with the project. So that is a little bit of a bigger issue than just throwing down some seed and, 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 uh, dealing with some grading issues.
Okay, can I ask a question? And so we're almost have things wrapped up pretty inching closer to the point where everything gets sent to StanTech for them to submit to the state. Am I?
We will give it to StanTech to review, and they will say, looks good. Then we will forward it to the Office of the Budget, the State, in Harrisburg, and wait.
Right.
But we do want them to give us, StanTech to give us their assessment saying, you guys are ready now. Please proceed.
So that's where we are in process. We're almost to the point with StanTech with, that we ask for their approval.
Yes, we. StanTech is the, uh...
The state advisors.
Right, they're a consultant. They're, they're consultants.
Right.
So if they give us the, the go-ahead, then we will, uh, submit to the state.
Right.
And again, this is the importance when you have these types of grants. You can go out and apply for grants, but some of these things need to be actively managed, and this thing was a train wreck. Um, it was just never managed at all. As a matter of fact, nobody even knew where the password was to submit documents. And Lisa, thanks for, thanks for getting this, uh, organized and, and almost to the finish line. I appreciate that.
I know that she spent like every afternoon since she's been hard working on it.
Yeah, and, and the grading issues at the, at the, um, the Bernie O'Neill Pavilion, I do not believe that was either, that was neither engineering nor, um, the contractor's fault, through any fault of theirs. So that's why it becomes a, uh, a change order. Okay. That's all I have, sir. All right.
Let me ask you that one?
Thanks, Tom.
I'm sorry.
Janice has something.
I was just curious, um, as far as the ball fields ever at Warner Park, with the electricity for there and for Monroe, it says that they were gonna start on eight three. Do we have an idea when that will be completed?
This is, uh, that is, uh, Response, which is the name of the engineering firm that Gilmore helped us find.
Right.
They were out doing the actual audits in the field.
Okay.
To start on, uh, the, assessing the electrical system, uh, failures and triumphs.
They start on August third.
Yes, they, they were, they met with Jess, they went out to the, to the site, uh, last week. Uh, the next step is for them to give us their findings to showing, that will include, uh, based on, you know, what improvements we need to make and how we can optimize the, the electric for both the, for both facilities. And then we can come up with our, our plan to, we want the, the lighting, how they make the lighting optimal, how to make the facility, uh, more attractive to everybody that wants to use it, and maybe people that haven't thought about using it yet, move the lights around, which is something we started talking about months ago, until we realized we might have more problems with the electrical system than we thought, because we're losing LED lights are getting, uh, installed and, and, and running out. There might be a problem with the electric. We've documented in a few meetings now what's wrong with the electric at, at Werner, with the cable hanging down, with the, the box in the, in the, uh, as... The, uh, the, the box is about a thousand years old, the service box. Antiquated.
Antiquated.
Oh, yeah. I was just curious if we had like a, you know, when we expected that would be completed. Is there a, a date set? I mean, I know they just got started.
For the recommendations, and then, um, I don't, it's gotta be.
I'll, I'll have to look into that, but...
They're just asking me, football season started and...
Yeah. Uh, I, I don't know that, quite honestly, um, I, we'll see. I don't know if we can get out there before the season starts.
Yeah, are you asking when the report will be done or when the improvements will be done?
When they'll, when they'll start the improvements.
Uh, that will, you're not gonna have it for this year.
Fortunately, I mean...
I know, the original plan was gonna be ready before the season started.
But we're not putting a Band-Aid on it now.
Right, exactly. The original plan was just to throw up a couple of lights.
Yeah, it's a whole different...
But we're gonna light it up like a football field.
No, no, that's fine. I'm not, I'm just, people are asking me, so I wanted to be able to give them the...
And we want to give them the best.
Just to the residents, we're not putting Band-Aids on anything anymore.
Oh, yeah, no, that's fine. I don't want Band-Aids on things.
It's gonna look like a football stadium lights, and that's what we need there. The soccer fields, I mean, those diodes, uh, who knows what's, whether it's the diode's burning out or there's a surge in power, we don't know. That's what we're gonna assess there. And we're also gonna look at lighting up the baseball diamond for night games.
Nice.
I mean, I think it's fantastic. We have this, if you have this showcase park, why not light the baseball diamond up?
That's a, an ARPA project as well.
I would think so, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the money's there, that's what it's for. These are all things that we couldn't afford, and, uh, now we can do them.
Yep.
Yeah.
There are some blessings that we couldn't get stuff.
Yes.
I have a comment for Tom. Uh, thank you for the report, and also, I was really impressed with Jess Fox's, uh, report to us, with all the incentives that she's doing for Parks and Rec. And, uh, I know that volleyball leagues are becoming more and more popular now, so I thought that was a, a really good plan to turn those, you know, decrepit, uh, tennis courts into the volleyball, and then it also could be doing the pickleball, too. So I think all those incentives, and it's gonna be bringing monies into the township, because there'll be different leagues that'll be using it. Yeah. Is that correct?
Yes, but I think, uh, the, the pickleball is probably slated for somewhere else. Is that gonna be at Monroe?
That was at a different park.
Oh, okay.
There's new pickleball, I'm unaware. There's already pickleball at Monroe.
Okay.
Yeah, Monroe, yeah. There's pickleball at Monroe. It's very popular now.
There's pickleball there?
There's overlay.
It's an overlay, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, yeah, I think, um, as we see, the tennis courts are, uh...
They're bad.
They're a mess, and, uh, to, to actually put a couple of nice volleyball courts in there and, uh, and, uh, you know, keep bringing leagues and, uh, you know, people, the residents, maybe start leagues. Great idea. Jess is gonna be wonderful for the township.
Sure. From Jess, she had also made a comment that, uh, there'll be, uh, youth centennial baseball players that will be coming back into our park, and I am really excited. As a coach, for many years, baseball, I'm really excited about that.
So when it's, when she said they're returning, that means that they weren't there?
That's what, I guess.
Is that, is that what I'm, my understanding? Yeah.
That's a shame. That's a shame.
So we're actually bringing youth baseball back?
Yes.
That's, that's great, because that's, that's the whole idea behind everything, is to utilize these facilities and, and bring back the people that have decided to, to leave, for whatever reason. So I, that's, that's great. I, I, when I, I did read that, and that was gonna be a question, well, you brought it up, so. Just wanted to ask that in private, actually.
Oh.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All right, where are we? I think we are at, uh, Scott?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Hayes. I handed out my solicitor's report earlier this evening. We discussed some litigation issues in executive session, gave you the updates there. Uh, the only other thing I'll bring up is something that Mr. Scott's been asking me about basically every other day, is, uh, was recently in the news involving the opioid litigation, was Teva Pharmaceuticals. Uh, I believe they've come to a settlement, and they're going to be submitting that to courts. So we should be expecting some information from our special counsel in the very near future, uh, talking about those settlement terms and the allocations and everything like that. I think if I'm correct, too, since we were last here, the distributions, the amounts of the distribution were finalized for the two previous settlements for, uh, Johnson &amp; Johnson and, um, Cardinal? Yes, Cardinal Health, Merit Source Virgin, uh, the distributors, so th, those numbers have been finalized, and everything is being proceeded through.
Great news.
Thank you, Mr. Holber. Any, any questions for, uh?
Oh, thank you, Scott.
Thanks.
And as always, Mr. Kenner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna be shorter than the solicitor tonight. Uh, I only have one change for my engineer's report. The Juniper, five oh six Juniper Street subdivision, it's a minor subdivision, corner of Juniper and Evergreen. They did receive approval at Planning Commission, and they will be before you, uh, at your September meeting. All other projects, as I noted in my view, are not ready. I think they want to clean up their plans, resubmit. Uh, I anticipate a couple of projects in October. I'll be ready, probably not September. So, uh, one addition, everything else is accurate. Uh, we've already gone over a bunch of the other projects, so I have nothing further.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. All right. What are we going to do about next month's meeting?
Next week's meeting?
Next week's meeting, right.
I'll be away, I told you.
So it's actually for the first. Do we want to postpone it till the 8th, which is the week after Labor Day? Labor Day is the 5th. Do we want to make it the 8th?
So we're going to cancel the August 18th meeting?
Yes. Yeah, let's start there. That's right. I was looking at September.
All right, so we're looking at September 8th?
Do we want to hold the meeting on the 1st? It's only a couple weeks away.
You know, I, I think we're better off waiting. I mean, we're not going to have much business before.
Plus, it's Labor Day weekend, too.
So it's Labor Day.
I would say that will put you, it's Labor Day weekend, it'll put you three weeks apart, and then the, going the 8th will be three weeks again before you get back to the normal schedule in the first week of October then, so.
Can everybody make the 8th?
I can do that.
I can do that.
Is that agreeable by everyone, the 8th?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, then we'll set the next township meeting for September 8th, Thursday? All right, anything else there, Mr. Scott?
For future agenda items, Scott, Mr. Holber and I, and the WMA, we've been talking about a possible amendment to the stormwater management and.
Yeah, ordinances.
Ordinances.
Just regulations from federal government, state government, that every so often we have to do a review and make changes to it. Looking through it, from a substantive standpoint, our ordinances are pretty strong. There's some minor, more administrative things they want added in there, so we'll have those ready for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Somewhere in the watershed ordinance, somewhere in the stormwater ordinance, somewhere in the Saldau.
Okay.
Other townships just adopted as-is. I just went through it with another client, and, I mean, you basically have to accept DEP's changes. We incorporated them in. Scott's handling that. There's not much to talk about. There's additional, additional requirements and, you know, more regulations.
It's going to keep, it's not going to get any better.
I was going to say, it's not. They're not getting smaller.
No.
And tonight, one last thing, Mr. Chairman, if I might. Tonight, with the adoption of the MMO numbers for the 23 budget, we've started the 2023 budget season, and we'll have more to come in September.
Wonderful. Wonderful. All right, anything else?
No, sir.
All right, so go to our second round of public comment.
Hi, that's Boyle, 6310 Centennial Station. When you were talking about the community park, I remembered we were up there for the pop-up flea market, or pop-up farmer's market, and we went to eat in the Bernie O'Neill Pavilion, and looked up, and three sections of the roof have mold on it, and two of the trellises have mold on it. And that's a new building.
It is a new building.
Wow. So something's leaking.
I, I'm not aware of the, anything of the mold, but we will certainly look into it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thanks, Beth.
Come on up, John.
John Priobus, 674 Joseph Avenue. Two comments I'd have. One, one on the pension thing. A lot of people, you know, talking about Band-Aids. That wasn't a Band-Aid. The, the decision we made, it's, it's permanent fix indirectly. We just have to test the time and, and see where it's going, and I think it's a good thing. I think it's positive, and it's a good, a good, good direction we're moving in. The other thing I wanted to talk about was Tom Thern. Tom Thern was a pretty good advocate for me in the township over the years, helping me navigate different things with the permits and whatnot that I needed to get done. All, also kind of a mentor, helped me along with a lot of different things, advice. He was part of our coffee clutch on Saturday mornings, which Ken knows about and Mark. He was a great guy. His family was, they're good people. His wife was involved in the community. So they're very, very community-oriented people, and should be recognized in that, in that fashion. He was a, a good friend, and, you know, God, God bless him.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, John.
You'll miss him.
Tom was a good guy.
Yep.
Thanks, John. All right, we'll go to supervisors' comments. I guess I'll go first. It's still, school's still out. The days are getting shorter, and I know this from being at the shore, that there's kids out and about. They're active. They're on bicycles. They're, they're, they're playing. So as the days get shorter, please be observant, you know, to, to people running into the streets and just people, the activities, the children, they're not paying attention. They're just out playing or riding their bikes, and they don't know the rules of the road, and, you know, let's, let's not have any accidents. I see. Enjoy the rest of the summer, and we'll see you after Labor Day. That's all I have. Kathy?
I would just like to say, this is a very, very productive meeting. Again, we are heading in the right way. It's financial stability. We have cut all the spending, and we have gotten great department heads. We've got one, at least, in our assistant manager. We've got Tom, Tom at the helm, and Jess under our Parks and Rec, and John Rainey with our financials, and Johnson Tera, Craig is our engineer.
Andrew.
Got Scott, Andrew. I don't want to miss anybody. Public Works, Water Management Municipal Authority, everybody. You're all doing a great job.
The chief.
Police Department.
What about the chief?
I was just going to, chief, I appoint to you. Look, look, see, the chief and his department do a great job. Everybody's on a really good plan. I'm very happy to say that. I've been attending these meetings for like 42 years, and let me tell you, we have never, ever taken steps to put money aside for future, like, OPED, and we've never done that. So this is really something new, and it's working. It's taking time, but it's working, and all of us are all rowing in the right direction. So thank you, all, everybody that's part of our township, that's part of this. Thank you.
Let's not forget the library.
Oh, yes, the library. See, I knew there was something I was going to miss.
Jerry will be on, should be texting.
She's got it. It's coming already, the text.
All right, thanks, Kathy.
Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wish everyone a happy and safe Labor Day holiday upcoming, and my fellow building tradesmen, happy Labor Day, and remember, no work on Labor Day.
That's right.
And I have, actually, I have a birthday coming up tomorrow.
Yeah, happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Mr. Weasner has graciously, graciously offered to stick around and buy me a drink after the meeting, and I'm going to take him up on that. Like I told him before the meeting, if I can quote the great Mickey Mantle, if I'd have known I was going to live this long, I'd have taken better care of myself. But that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Judy?
Oh, I just want to say, have a great rest of the summer, and have a great Labor Day, and remember what Labor Day's for. And the first Labor Day parade ever took place in Philadelphia, and I want you to know that about labor. We have a long labor tradition in the Delaware Valley, and I want you to remember that there's still opioid deaths out there, more and more every month, and please take care and notice if you have a member of your family or a friend that's constantly depressed, you have to take a look at it, say something, try to help. And that's all. Have a good Labor Day.
Thanks, Judy.
Thank you.
Janice?
I just wanted to, everybody's going to be going back to school early. Usually, they start school after Labor Day, but they're going to be going back in the week before, so it's going to be, get a head start. It's hard to believe it's coming up already. But just remember, when you go back to school, you know, school might have changed, or might be some new rules, some things that have changed through the summer, but be open-minded, be loving and caring to the people around you. You know, we need to set that standard as adults for our children, so let's be positive, be happy, and communicate. All I have.